I don't think there's many people in this chamber who would like to be talking about the dissolvant of Gedling or all the boroughs and district councils on the county and city. But that is what the government have expected. They've sent us a statutory invite, which is a legal process that started, and if we don't, as a collective group of councillors or councils, come up with options, then the Secretary of State has the power to dictate on what local government will look like across the country. So it's important we agree and submit an interim plan, and I think we all, obviously, in this room are prepared to do that, because our amendment doesn't remove that submission of the interim plan. What our amendment does do, though, Mr Mayor, is endorse option two in the interim plan, which, as is set out in the amendment, is a unitary authority covering Nottingham City, as is, it's already a unitary authority, it will stay as one, and then all the districts and boroughs within the county of Nottinghamshire forming another, a separate unitary authority. The reasons why we think that is important is that any other option within the local plan, 1E or 1B, which includes two districts or boroughs joining with the city, would cost £8 million. That's the difference between a county-only unitary or a city plus two, and it can be whatever two you wish to think about. £8 million. £8 million, in my view, that we should be spending on services and improving services, whether that's improving roads and pavements, or public spaces, or adult social care, children's social care, leisure centres, whatever it is, because it'll all come under one authority, whatever that is, that's £8 million that can go into improving those services for residents, and we're all here to represent residents and work together to improve them. So that's £8 million quid that would be saved by going with option two, rather than any other option. And the reason why it saves £8 million quid is because if any part of the existing districts and boroughs join the city, you will have to disaggregate services. So there are people in Nottinghamshire right now who are receiving adult social care by the county council. They're receiving adult social care by a care provider that's rated good by the CQC. And if you live in Rushcliffe, for example, which is at threat of city takeover, on 11:59, on the night before you join with the city, you're receiving good care, rated by the CQC. That could be anybody's mother, father, daughter, brother, sister, or children in this room. At one minute past midnight, after the government have turned around and said, yes, no, we'll go with 1E, at one minute past midnight, that person who is receiving care is transferred to the city council. The city council's care quality is rated inadequate by the CQC. Nobody in this room should be endorsing that, because it could be, as I've said, your family member or friend who would be in that position, and we should not allow that to happen. The same goes for children's services. So in Nottinghamshire, we have a thriving youth service, and there are youth centres right across the county in every district and borough, and there are libraries in every district and borough. The county council, under the Conservative administration, has never closed a library in any community. The city are in consultation with closing some of their libraries right now, and they are going to close their community centres. If you are in the county, under one county unitary, those services will be protected, and you'll have £8 million quid extra to invest in them. If you disaggregate the existing county boundary, bang goes your library's community centres and everything else, because you'll be bailing out the debt of the city and losing access to good services. And by the way, any part of the county that joins the city will pay more council tax as a result, and we must not allow that to happen. Don't just take, this isn't just my view, Mr Chairman, there's petitions right across the county in Rushcliffe, Gedling, Brockstow, Hocknell, and they've got over 13,000 signatories saying no to the city expansion, and the Gedling one itself is on about nearly 3,000. Now, you may sit here and think, well, Gedling's not at threat of joining the city, so who cares? Let's put the interim plan in. It is at threat, actually, because 1B in the interim plan does include Gedling, but if all the leaders across the county don't want 1B, then you may think 1E is going to be the resort, which is Rushcliffe and Brockstow. Can I just spell out that although Gedling may not join the city, if you shrink the council tax base, as is at the moment, i.e. the existing county boundary, the need doesn't change. So 70% of everything that the county council pays at the moment on adult social care and children's social care is spent in the north of the county, including Gedling, Mansfield and Ashfield, but the tax base to pay for that comes from the south. The tax base income between Rushcliffe and Gedling, the difference in council tax income is £15 million. £15 million quid.
Can I just say, councillor Smith, if you've just gone over the five minutes, I'll give you a few more seconds.
Yeah, I'll sum up, thank you. So £15 million quid is the difference between Gedling and Rushcliffe on the income of council tax base, but if Rushcliffe goes into the city, you lose that income, but the demand stays the same. So all I'm saying is, any other option bar option two risks a reduction in services for every single area, not just those under threat of the city takeover. So that's why I'm seconding the amendment to endorse the county-only option, so residents of Gedling can continue to receive the services that they deserve, and they receive now.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Whilst this looks a good option, in that it keeps us out of the city, and let's face it, who wants to be part of the city? And it is also the simplest option, it is actually the one that is probably the one least likely to be accepted by government. The city is simply too small, and is frankly a failing council, not a failed council. A unitary county would be simply too big, and this proposal, I must say, reeks of politicking ahead of the county council elections, and I think we will be voting against it. Thank you.
Councillor Ellis.
What this amendment means is, it's a land grab. The Conservatives have gone back to Kay Cutts' treasure chest and pulled out the proposals she had for taking over all the district councils and absorbing them into the county council. As councillor Hughes says, it's interesting that that's a few weeks before the county elections, so it's very obviously, it's a political stunt. Our view as a group is that the leaders and the chief executives working with the officers have taken us this far, and that there's more work to be done, and that we want to keep all our options open, we want the discussion to go on, we want intelligent thinking about the options, and then when we get towards the end, we will come to a view. This is just an attempt to head off discussion, stop discussing things and just go with Kay Cutts' first idea. And I think the other thing to remember is the current structure of local government in this area has lasted for 50 years, so we need to be looking ahead, 10, 20, even 50 years, not for the short-term scaremongering that we've heard today, you know, what happens a minute after midnight. These proposals are for new authorities who will work differently, who we need to think about how they will work, and what's the best thing, what's the best thing for Gedling in 10, 20 years' time. Our group will vote this down, we're happy to see the proposal for consultation with the public, we don't want to close down the options that have been so carefully worked out by the leaders and the chief executives, so we will vote against it. Thank you.
Councillor Bestwick.
We all want what's best for not only the residents of Gedling, but we have to bear in mind all of the residents of Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. And councillor Smith is also quite right, we might say, well, it doesn't matter if Rushcliffe is in the city, it's not going to affect us then, is it? But it is, you know, our friends, our relatives could be using city services, and whether we like it or not, the city services are appalling, they are almost bankrupt, it's been run badly for a very, very, very long time.
Councillor Elliot.
Number two is the only option really for us. I'm going to talk about my residents, it's, no one's mentioned rurality. We're a rural community, as Ravenshead is, no one's consulted with my residents, I've been out knocking on doors, they're petrified about going into the city. People can't afford where they're living at the moment, and they're really concerned about the council tax raise, and that's one of the main things. I've got private healthcare providers that the county council fund coming out to Calverton, I've got, we've got partial funders, we've got self-funders, we have, people can't afford to live where they're living, and it's not been taken into account, has it, at all? So please consider the residents when you're making these decisions, and consider the rural areas that people have to travel into. How can someone in the city that's never been out to Calverton or one of my other villages, Woodborough Lamley, make a decision about planning matters, planning issues, anything like that? They don't know the area, so please take that into consideration.
Councillor Maltby.
I personally don't want Gedling to become within the boundaries of this city, and I think it'd be hypocritical of me to think that it's okay for Brockstow and Rushcliffe to do the same, so that's my thought on that. In reply to councillor Ellis, yes, carefully thought out three options. So why is the Labour MP suggesting there's a fourth option on social media, and people are jumping on that? Residents are getting confused now and thinking there's a fourth option of Gedling staying as it is, that's just muddying the water. And on the final bit, you accuse us of electioneering, can I remind you, it's your government that gave us this date to sort it out, that coincides with the election, so it's not electioneering, it's responding to your government's requests.
Councillor Martin Smith.
I think voting for anything else apart from the Conservative amendment, we take the risk of being banded together with Nottingham City Council. I was delighted, actually, to read the results of the anonymous survey done amongst us as council members, where 65% of us do not wish to be part of Nottingham City Council. Please remember that, anything apart from voting with this amendment runs that risk. I'd just like to ask the question, let's turn it on its head, what does Nottingham City Council want us? They want us, they want other authorities to join them, what are they offering us? They're actually offering nothing to residents of Gedling, members, residents of my ward, residents of your wards, they are offering nothing, they just want to take, they want to take, to bankroll a bankrupt council. And as has previously been mentioned, we've got a very well-run Nottingham County Council, the funding, the investment that they put into libraries, community centres, youth services are likely to go.
Councillor Adams.
Currently, in terms of crossover, I mean, the most obvious connection with our boroughs and the county council is already we have so many things that cross over, you know, whether that be the waste that is collected by ourselves but then is disposed off by the county council, whether that be the education that our children attend, a lot of the schools in the, in our own borough are, in fact, one of the schools in my own area in Gedling, Carlton and Willows, was expanded with £14 million worth of additional funding from Nottinghamshire County Council. So we're already intrinsically linked, and that goes as well for our libraries, it's already been mentioned that libraries throughout our borough have had some additional investment, there was an extra £27,000 spent in Burton Joyce, at Burton Joyce Library only a year and a half ago. So, you know, again, we're already working with the boroughs on many things. I think about some of the pumping arrangements with regards to how we're dealing with floodwater in Colick, and already there's already existing relationships between Gedling Borough Council and Nottinghamshire County Council, working together to achieve positive outcomes for residents. So we're already an incredibly interlinked council, so, and the two councils work together, and we have many members in here, well, a number of members in here that are dual haters and both sit on the county council and on the borough council as well, so those links are there also. We are effectively already relatives in those terms, and we work incredibly closely together. So what point would there be to rip that relationship apart and instead make a new one with a friend that doesn't want to play nicely in terms of their services? In fact, they want to give you a worst swap for your taxpayers' money, because they, like has already been said, they want to give you inadequate services for already your good services, they want to give you underperforming services already for well-performing services. And you look at some of the history that we've had, you know, we've had the Robin Hood energy mistake, £50 million quid, you know, completely lost taxpayers' money, lost over what was effectively an experiment, you know, we, and there's been no real talk even further about the public service side of things, well, I think we've got a proud history of very good public services in this area. And any time you read a newspaper, you're reading about something else that's gone wrong in the city, whether that be the allocation of money that was meant to go to housing, that was somehow spent somewhere else. There are big problems there, that, I remember going back to when we were talking about whether we're going to partner with the city on the Gedling Country Park, and I made a point there and then about the fact we didn't want to do that, we don't want to be any part of that, in fact, I asked the question, can we confirm that we have no connection with the city at all? Because I was that concerned about what that arrangement would mean, and I don't see how that's moved on, other than the fact, I know we've sent in, you know, special auditors to go in there and work with the city council for things to improve. But what's interesting about the by-product of that discussion, of those meetings, has actually led to the city council now being financially sustainable in 27, 28. So it begs the question, why do they need to expand? If they're already achieving their tax base, and they're already achieving that on a financially stable footing, what possible reason would they have to need to take on other councils? And that's the concern, what is that? What is the reason? So, look, we can't, there's no point in this connection, there's no point in us being a part of the city, we all stand, in my group, against this connection with the city, we do not want that under any circumstances. Picking option two as a council today sends an absolute fundamental clear message to the government, as well as to the leader of Nottingham City Council. Gedling Borough Council is not for sale. Gedling Borough Council needs to go somewhere where it's got an equal footing with another council, it needs to be somewhere where it's appreciated at the same level and treated well. It's a good council with good people, it deserves better. And for that reason, my group will fundamentally be supporting our own amendment, of course. I would love it if some of you would actually back this amendment as well, and really, really prove that you believe that Gedling shouldn't be part of this city. It's a very simple vote, just say yes.
Councillor Whiting, would you like to propose your amendment?
The first three points in the recommendation remain unamended, with number four added, which says, notwithstanding any future developments, the current preference of Gedling Borough Council is that we are not part of any merger which includes Nottingham City Council. The reason that we've added, councillor Hughes and myself have added at the start, notwithstanding any future developments, is because there may be some kind of miraculous development that means that merging with the city would be acceptable to us and to our residents. I can't imagine what that would be, but I'd think it would be unfair, given the amount of work that has been done to hamstring the process completely by ruling it out under any circumstances. But let me start off, Mr Mayor, by saying that in addition to the survey of colleagues here that was carried out by the council, I did a resident survey myself in my patch, and only 26% of respondents wanted to be part of the city, 51% wanted no change, and I understand, we've heard that that's not an option, but then we were told that the councils had to have £500,000, the new councils, and Nottingham City doesn't have that, and yet PWC, who have been paid £100,000 to come up with this report, one-third of their recommendations are unacceptable under the terms that were set. I don't think we need to rehearse the arguments against going into the city again, I think we all know what they are, we know it's unpopular, we know it would cost £8 million more money to organise it, we know it would increase council tax on our residents inevitably, at a time when costs are already going up. I had my water bill this week that's gone up over £100 a year, many of our residents cannot afford another council tax increase. I think this whole project, and there'll be more to say on this later perhaps, but this whole project really is covering up the lack of funding that local government has had for the past 15 years, and it's covering up, trying to cover up, the fact that Nottingham City Council is an incredibly badly-run council, or certainly has been in the past. I heard the leader of the city council say that it's not fair that people from the districts go into the city and use their services, or nobody in the districts forced them to set up an energy company that lost £50 million and left them in the perilous financial state that they've been in, and have required many government bailouts, when we're all very aware in this chamber that Gedling has had the scraps from that table when it comes to government funding. I just want to quote, Mr Mayor, the words yesterday on social media of the former deputy leader of Nottingham City Council, Sally Longford, she was commenting on those elsewhere in the county who oppose a merger with the city, and she said, "They are hunkering down in your rotten little boroughs, a meaningless collection of suburban towns." I'm going to say that again, "hunkering down in your rotten little boroughs, a meaningless collection of suburban towns." I don't think anyone in this room would endorse the fact that we are hunkering down, or that Gedling or any other borough is a rotten borough, I mean, for someone who was in leadership of Nottingham City Council to say that is quite something. We are not a meaningless collection of suburban towns, Gedling means something to the people that live here and the people that work here, and it should continue to mean something. So that's why my first preference is that we stay as we are, but I accept that's not where we are, but at all costs, I believe Gedling Borough Council must be kept out of the city as things currently stand. So that's why this amendment says, notwithstanding any future developments, our current preference is to stay out. So I understand the point that discussions are ongoing, and we will come to a view at the end, I hope we'll be asked in a meaningful way for that view, but as things stand, it's unacceptable. And councillor Ellis mentioned about we need to look ahead, perhaps 50 years, if we're looking ahead 50 years, why has this whole thing been rushed through in seven weeks? And we've been given six months, virtually from start to finish, including the consultation, which I understand is going to happen over the summer, when everyone's, you know, on holiday, or looking after their children, or doing other things. The whole thing is completely unacceptable as things stand, it should have been properly planned, there should have been proper consultation with the public before these ideas were come up with, and I think there should have been a referendum on the same day as the 2027 local elections, and we could have gone from there, that would have been actual devolution, not what we're being handed now to put our name to. So I'll close there, Mr Mayor, and I urge everyone to support the amendment, thank you.
This is obviously getting to be an emotive, ill-informed, ill-tempered, shortsighted, scaremongering debate. The Labour group's position is that we keep the options open, and we give ourselves time to think about them properly in the cool light of day, and with properly well-informed information. The Conservative motion, amendment tried to shut that down, we voted that down, this amendment also tries to shut down the debate. Our position is, we need to have proper debate, proper informed debate, and make a sensible discussion, a sensible decision, without cutting debate off prematurely.
I'm at a loss to understand which debate councillor Ellis is in. I think it's been reasonably well-tempered, and, you know, the reason it's rushed is because central government have been rushing us. The reason we are all sat here tonight is because we're working to the government's timetable, which I think we've all said, including councillor Clark, has said that it's been rushed and it should have been taken a little bit longer. And I think we all must know what our residents feel about the possibility of going into the city. If you speak to any residents, which I trust we all do on a regular basis, else we wouldn't be sat in this chamber, they must understand the fears of going into a city where the council have run it so badly for so long, and all the points everybody's already made about the city, we're going with high council tax and worse services, and I think most people understand that. Also, I find myself in a very difficult position of agreeing with councillor Whiting for a change. So, I mean, the amendment is very simple, do the members of this chamber want their residents to end up as part of a city council that is one of the worst-run in the country? It's fairly straightforward, and I would hope we would all come to the same conclusion. Thank you.
I do wonder why councillor Ellis is opposing this, I wonder what message he's tried to send to the residents of this borough. He is a member, of course, of the cabinet that approved a £5,000 gift for statue in the city, perhaps he's looking for closer links? And this £5,000, of course, was mentioned by the leader at the time, of not very much money. I beg to differ, I wonder what the motives are, does the Labour Party in this room really want a link with the city? If not, support the amendment put forward by councillor Whiting.
The problem for me is that there is such a weight out there, and it is, there's an election coming, it doesn't help without, there's an election coming at the moment, and it will be bonded around, you know, saying, you said this, you said that, and I've made my position quite clear, but I'll just ask for some patience with it, so we can try and catch up with this stuff that's being thrown at us, because we've got the mayor, the mayoral thing setting up at the moment, and I went to a meeting the other day, the agenda was 402 pages of that, and I don't think there was anybody in that room who could quite understand everything that was going off in it, because everything's been pushed and pushed and pushed to do it. So I'm just asking for a bit of patience on this, and just one question, or one answer, Mr Mayor, for information, we didn't get involved with Robin Hood Energy, because I stopped it, because it didn't stack up, we went through it, and it didn't stack up, because we could have been a big partner in that at some point, but I stopped it, and you're quite right, and that decision's been proved to be right. But all the other things that's been thrown about, I think you've got to wait until we actually start putting some meat on the bones, because if we don't, oh, Jim Boy, what's his name, Mike Mann, he'll come along here and say, right, you're doing that, and where does that bring? Local representation, you know, we're fighting, all of it, no matter about political colour, it's when you go out, we like, people do like Gedling, as we've said, and it is going to be, it is going to be very difficult to try and persuade people to come any other way, but we've got to get those facts together, and the only way we'll get the facts together if we keep working together and keep it a level-headed way of doing it, there'll be a room, there'll be a right ruck at some point, there had to be, there might be tomorrow, we've got, Sam and I and Mike have got county council tomorrow, and that's probably going to be a bit lively, but I think at the moment, you know, voting against this, and then move on, and then go back to substantive one, which is the recommendations on page five, and we move that one, and then move forward. I have, can assure the opposition here, that I have got my eye on this, I spent so many hours recently, along with Mike, and I thank Mike for his back-up, because it's been significant, because there are meetings continually, and with the chief execs, with ourselves individually, all the other stuff that goes off, it's all been, it's been in good nature, but they've got to have those facts, and I stress it again, it's only proven by facts, so all this rhetoric that's running around about chatting the city of this, that, the other, all do one big one, and everything else, donuts, and all the rest of it, won't stack up unless you can back it, back it with the actual factual figures, so I would vote against this, thank you.
Mr Mayor, that vote is lost.
The three options in the plan are clusters deliverable, and the clusters deliverable by the consultants, PWC, that was referenced earlier, against a set of criteria that the government set out, so, and that's been assessed and judged, and that's why these three options are there. Unfortunately, us on this side can't vote for the recommendations as are, to submit all of those options without highlighting a preference, and that's why we'll vote against the recommendations as are in front of us this evening. It's important, somebody mentioned public services earlier, criteria three of the second letter that councillor Clark and I and other leaders received from government, criteria three was all about improvements to local services. If you're going to shake the system up, which, fair enough, biggest shake-up to local government in 50 years, let's do it for the sake of the residents, and only for the sake of the residents. And as I say, you can save £8 million quid by doing it on the current boundaries and improve services. If we submit this plan as is, without standing up and having a voice, our residents elect us to have a voice, if we submit this plan without endorsing a preferred option, or even endorsing the, or not endorsing, forbidding the city takeover of Gedling, then what we're doing is leaving it open for the government to come back to us over the summer and say, well, that's what you're going to have, one of the three. That is a massive high risk, that not only is that risk of Gedling joining the city, because that's what option 1B, which we're all about to vote to put forward to government, says, which, and we've all had the argument, haven't we, of why that would be a bad idea, Gedling residents pay more for less, it also keeps 1E alive as well, without standing up and saying, we don't want it. And that doesn't risk Gedling going in the city, it risks Rushcliffe and Brockstow going in the city, but again, you're shrinking the tax base, I made the point earlier, you're shrinking the tax base that's paying into the remainder of the county, which Gedling will be part of, you're taking £15 million out the pot, which is the difference between Rushcliffe and Gedling, whilst keeping the same demand, you're still keeping the same amount of people in the north requiring social care, you're still keeping the libraries that we all want open, you're still keeping the leisure centres and the community centres, which will close, because the county council spends £350 million a year on adult social care, and 70% of it goes on the north of the county. That's why we can't accept the recommendations as is. It's important to remember, and I know, John, you and I have fought
It's important to remember, and I know, John, you and I have fought together on this one, that the interim plan includes the request to government for boundary changes, because the government have said you have to do it based on existing boroughs and districts, what a load of nonsense. If it hasn't worked over the past 50 years, it ain't going to work for the next 50, is it? So the interim plan does include, and I think it's something different in Nottinghamshire, which we'll see, which is a good thing, it does include calls for boundary changes, because if Gedling does end up in the city, which you're about to vote to be an option, if Gedling does end up in the city, there's obviously parts of the rural parts of it that should be nowhere near the city, none of Gedling should be near the city, by the way, but you're about to vote for that, but the boundary changes, paragraphs in the report, leave that open for discussion over the summer, so that's something you can all help yourself go to sleep tonight on, but we won't be voting for it at all without the endorsing of the preferred option, which is the county-only option, which makes the most sense.
That's carried, Mr. Mayor.
It is carried then, thank you, everybody.